Let's call a meeting. Order.
Do you need to gavel?
Awesome play.
So, agenda additions and deletions. Approval of the select board minutes from 5:15 and 6:15.
I'll make a motion. For both.
So Bruce will need to second the one for May 15th because neither Carol- Carolyn or myself were there.
So we still don't have enough?
You still don't have enough?
People to...
Yeah.
For that one?
Prove the...
For the 15th?
Yep.
Okay, we take that one?
Okay, so I'll make a motion for the second, uh, the, yeah.
And I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pay orders. For June 20th. I was just curious, Julie, did, uh, Governor Gary split out what the costs were for the ECA versus...
And you got the bills right there?
Right here.
For 23, 25, I was just wondering. How much each one of that?
Well, this one I found it.
It's R G or A?
A.
We have a bill of 435 for the Williams, 577 also for the Williams matter, and 1312 for the, uh,
This one?
BCA matter, yep.
Thank you. Other discussion?
I make a motion to approve the pay orders as of June 20, 2023 in the amount of 214,087 dollars and 44 cents.
Wait a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Hey, can we go back and clean up the select board minutes from 5:15?
Yep, we getting all the justices here.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second it.
What had to get changed from that? Because I wasn't here last time.
Nothing, because there was only you three were here.
Oh, right, so we couldn't, yeah, okay.
We could vote on it.
Right, 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 okay.
Exactly.
Yes.
But now you're here.
Now I'm here. Aye.
Aye.
And two abstain.
Table out again.
Good job.
Road Commissioner, we don't have a road commissioner yet.
We're about 15 minutes before that item. Do you want to go to honorable mentions?
He might be here.
Honorable mentions here. So we want to thank the ARPA committee for their diligent work on 27 applications and submitting a final report to the select board with spending recommendations. Let's get that one. Anne Ewod, Burke Jones, Colin Whitehouse, and Cynthia and Richard Holden for beautifying the gardens around the boy with the boot. And Ken Welch and David Castiglai for assisting with requests for proposals for town hall projects.
And for Bruce Duchesne for filling in at the transfer station.
Thank you.
Can we all, can I also ask you all to speak up a little? Sure, thanks.
So that's some honorable mentions.
Public comments? Public comments? Fiscal year 24 law enforcement agreement. Contract is based on what we budgeted for the year.
There's nothing different looking over the contract itself that jumped out, right? No, it's the same.
No, it's
Yeah.
Other than the hours and totals.
Yeah, it's other than four hours increase, it's the
Right.
Same as it's always been.
Have we ever been double charged? Because we never really ask, they just come when we can, right? Like when they work into their schedule, because there's that part about being double charged if they're in training. I'm just curious, not that we have to go into it, but.
So I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the law enforcement contract.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wallingford Day. They're moving quicker than I expected.
This should be brief, too. I just wanted, this is our last meet, your last meeting before Wallingford Day actually happens. So, which is really exciting. And first, everyone's invited, of course, and I hope everybody who's in town is able to come, because it should be another good one. And I just wanted to go over really one detail that something that was, came up for discussion last year, which was the bike parade, and and we, there were, I remember when I came to the select board that we talked about it and it was, we just wanted to make sure everybody was safe for it, and it went really smoothly last year. There's one little hitch this year, which is that there's a large sign on the street that we went on last time that I don't think is appropriate for children to go by. Like have a parade that is for our young people to be on. So we're thinking of shifting the parade to River Street instead, which also makes us, we have fewer street crossings that way, so in that way it's going to be safer.
And less traffic.
And less traffic, exactly. It's just a quieter street, and if people are and it was more about the movement than it was about people on either side, so I just wanted to check and make sure that that was acceptable.
So then River, like sometimes I get confused with River Street. River Street comes back then on, or that, that comes back over the tracks again?
River Street comes up over the tracks. It crosses the tracks either way, because the parking lot by True Temper, where we set up, we had to cross the tracks to get onto Railroad Street.
Okay.
And this way we cross, actually sort of in a more controlled place, because it's a, it's a stop there.
It's a stop, and then also you can be kind of spread out, because the kids, I remember last year, it was like, we kind of spread out quite quickly.
So I just wanted to make sure that that should be.
I think it sounds like a safer route, actually, to me.
So that's what I was feeling, too.
A little bit more monitored, so I don't have a problem with the change.
And other than that, everything is pretty much going according to plan, with the activities more around the Village Center in the morning, and then shifting in the afternoon with the bike parade. We haven't, we're going to be setting the schedule firmly. The schedule will be finished and firm by this Thursday night when we have our next meeting.
As firm as it gets when you're hurting cats.
Right, 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 allowing for, you know, adjustments as needed, but. So, and then it'll shift down there, there'll be a dance on the field, sort of, what is that, three, four-ish?
The conjur dances could be around five?
Around five, and then, um, the Plumb Bobs are going to play, and then the Brett, the DJ who was here last time, is going to play the last bit until the fireworks.
Yep.
And there will be, there will be food trucks down, up here in the morning, down at the, um, the field in the afternoon, and then, and then Michelle is also getting a few to put on her property by the block, and she's going to have more of a
Outdoor contained, older crowd.
Crowd there with maybe some music on the block patio. And from like 2 to 8 until before fireworks.
Before fireworks, so for people who don't want to go down to the right field or, you know.
Okay.
In the same case, it'll be as far as parking, that was another question, actually, I was going to bring up, parking. We're going to do as much as we can to encourage people, anyone who can, the farther you can walk, that's how far away you should park. And we're going to block off the end of Meadow Street so that that can be a turnaround in the event of an emergency or anything else. We'll block that off. And then we'll open it up after fireworks for people to turn around, and so people won't be parking up that far a lot at the end. And we're going to block off too, the, if we can, the little driveway that goes around back that people use to go fishing, because that's, I mean, that's an emergency, I feel like that's a good emergency lane, and it's also for our musicians to bring their equipment in.
Oh, great, okay.
And then we just have one question, which would be, Mark, you were, I believe, talking to Greenmount Power about a town sign thing?
We're still waiting for them, or someone to
From them to get back?
To get back to us with the agreement.
Okay, so
I don't, I don't, Sandy, they were going to talk with you directly, so.
I didn't get anything.
Maybe we can. Thank you. So we're guessing that, based on Austin Graphics timeline, and more importantly, VTrans' approval timeline, we're guessing that we won't have it up for this year, but if we could get the infrastructure in place, I would actually do the permit for VTrans for next year, this year. Like I would start the ball rolling, so that we're good and done. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we may order the sign and have it lower down, but that's
Right, well, that's, like I said, I'll reach out to Greenmount Power, I'll just
Awesome.
Drop her a note in the morning and
Say we're, and you're
Just see where it is. She did tell, said she was going to email it out to us, the agreement.
Appreciate it. Just so we are in the loop and know where we stand with what we're hanging and who we're asking to do what. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So, MFG committee isn't here yet. The committee isn't here yet.
Rec committee's not here yet. Liquor license.
I'm kidding.
That's me. Hi.
Hi.
So I bet it's a big surprise to everybody that I'm hoping to open a market.
Thanks, sir.
Next spring. As part of my business plan, I live like two week in 802 Liquor Store in Town Hall, and it's a pretty convoluted process. The Department of Liquor came here and looked at the site for compliance or any roadblocks that they could see for the location, the space allotted in our business plan or our site plan for backstop, for security. And everything passed their, Rich and Dusty came and looked at the site, and everything passed their, their guidelines. And then the second step was to, when they opened the bid process a couple weeks ago, was to submit a letter of intent, which I did. And then they didn't seem to break down on their website. The application is actually due on Friday. So as far as I could tell, and from the information I received today, the first step is to come to you and ask for a beer and wine second class license, which I've applied for. And so that comes to the village, and you approve it, and then I'm able to move along with the liquor store, the 802 spirits application. Which is due Friday.
So they need, they need approval from town just for a regular beer and wine before they'll
As far as I can tell, today was a holiday and nobody really got back to me about those specifics, but it has been bumped up to the director of the Department of Liquor to make sure that it's not a problem on their website for me applying for the
The website has some broken links. I'm working with Monica.
The website has some broken links, it's a little nerve wracking, because they have a two week window after three years of planning and all of this process. So I'm here tonight to ask for permission ultimately for a approval for an 802 spirits store as part of the market at the block. And all I could, all I could do was fill out the second class liquor application, which I paid for with you guys.
That's the wine and beer.
Yeah, I think it gets bumped up to the next level pending your approval and not going to the Department of Liquor. That's my understanding.
Julie, doesn't, doesn't this usually go to you and they pay a fee before it comes to law?
She paid the fee.
She's paid the fee, okay.
You have the application.
So we're all clear on that?
You just approve it, and then I just go online tomorrow and say that it's approved.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
It's online now.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor license application for Wallingford Village Market.
I'll second.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're approved.
On to your next steps?
Yes, to the next steps.
Something like making it happen in a hurry, huh?
Except
Said nothing like making it happen in a hurry.
It's been 90 years in the process.
Oh, no, no, two weeks.
They haven't actually warned everybody in the area that might have an interest in it, so it was actually posted on there for the town of Wallingford, and Pommel was posted just two weeks ago. So it's, it's part of their internal process to make it transparent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Gilbert Herbert.
Yeah.
Gilbert Herbert Library Bolt Mail Request.
Thanks, sir.
Each year, the library officials request the use of the town's bolt mail permit to send out fundraising letters. It doesn't cost us anything. It goes. You want to approve the request, or?
I'll make a motion to approve the request for, to use our bolt mailing permit for the library's annual appeal.
Wait a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain from this one.
I understand that. Did that, Kathy, you're staying?
I abstain.
Yep, thank you.
Wait, just before we go any further, because I just realized something. Kathy, you're abstaining because
Because Michael is
Is the chair or just on the board? Because then I should abstain because Abby's on the board.
Well, because he's the chair of the board, and he like approves like everything, so I'm abstaining some of it because
I'm just wanting to make sure that when I should abstain in the same situation.
I don't think Abby has the same sort of
The cloud.
Delegation responsibility, so I think you're okay.
Good, I just want to make sure we didn't have to do that whole thing again.
No, I hear what you're saying, but I think you're good.
Okay.
You're not going to profit from this, right?
No, no, no way, I'm not.
So you're fine then.
Okay, cool.
I make a motion, we only have one meeting in July.
Second? I'll for that.
That was quick. Sorry to jump the gun, Bruce, but I saw that, so yeah, I think.
Sandy's already posted the date, didn't he?
Enjoy your vacation.
So all those in favor of one meeting in July?
Aye.
Yeah.
What?
And Sima is around.
Sima is here, so why don't we back up and collect?
Cruising tonight.
We're cruising tonight.
The agenda does say all times approximate. Whatever.
So you're ready to talk this, or?
So the rec committee chose vendors that we want to use, but we can discuss it. So we got two, two estimates, one in two estimates for excavation. And we want to go with Kevin Ruane for the excavation, because the FAS board is kind of more you know, it could be, end up being less, but then it could be, end up being more, and Kevin, it's a fixed 600, so we don't have to worry about it being more. So we just thought that would be, plus Kevin is available to do it soon. We wanted to use Bill Lowson, he's a little, his estimate was quite a bit cheaper. So he's going to do it for a fixed rate, two, 1,200 bucks. Both are equivalent, we're getting the same thing from both quotes. And that'd be a curb, a curb stop at the building that's, when it's shut, it self drains. So that'll drain the piping in the building when the curb stop is shut. There'll be an isolation valve inside the building, and then on the outside, there'll be a spring loaded faucet. Chris, the town water operator, will inspect the piping when it's not covered back up in dirt, and he'll, he'll install the meter. So his, he said the annual fee to open and close the curb stop during, for the winter and drain it is 25 bucks, and so it'd be, that'd be twice a year, so it'd be 50 bucks a year. We checked with the fire district clerk, and she said we don't need a new permit, because we're, I guess they, since they had water at the park in the past, and there's already a curb stop on the road, we're just using that same line, so there's no need to do a new permit. Yeah, so
Has Kevin, has Kevin Dunn worked for the town in the past? Does he have insurance certificate on him?
Does Kevin Dunn work for them?
So we'll need the insurance.
We're going to need an agreement, right? We're going to need a contract with him, and I'm leaving in the morning, I can't, I can't write a contract.
Okay, so that's the same thing that I got Dale to sign.
Well, he's, he's going to need to sign an employee work agreement and an actual contract to do the work, plus the insurance he took this. One of, it's the difference if it's under 600 or over 600, so.
Okay, it's right at 600. It's 600 even.
Well, I mean, his is a flat rate of 600. We have to check with Jill, and you could check with Jill in the morning, it might be 600 and under, so you wouldn't need a contract for him, you would with Bill, though. For Lowson, for 1,200.
Okay, so does Bill know how to do that, or?
No, I mean, I mean, the town needs to provide a contract.
Okay, so you're going to do that to me?
No, I don't have time, I'm leaving first thing in the morning.
After you get back?
Yes.
Okay.
I just didn't, I didn't know when the work was going to happen.
Bill says he can do it whenever Kevin is ready to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I can certainly do it.
As well. Your performance.
Okay, great.
Hey, Bruce? I know it's only 600 dollars to Kevin, but is that something that the road crew can do, seeing as we have our own excavator sitting down there? We're just digging a hole.
Yeah, I wondered about that myself.
I mean, it's not like it's saving a lot of water, but it's also on town property, it's also benefiting the town, it's something you know, the town's doing.
I, I don't see why they couldn't.
The only thing I worry about is they're always so busy, and we know that Kevin is available and he can do it pretty soon. And we also, we need to worry about the time, because we need to get this done fairly soon, because it's a 22, 23 expenditure.
Well, we're not, we won't have a contract in place until the second week of July anyways. So you won't have a con, you won't get a contract out to whoever until that time. I mean, Bruce is, I wrote it down, Bruce, but Bill's already got an agreement with the town, I believe, because he works for the town every year, turning the water on and off and that type of thing, so I don't know if we need an additional agreement with Bill.
We don't have, I mean, that's just, he just volunteered a Shabbat, we don't want to agree with him on that, so.
So we'd have to get a contract from Bill when he's
His is over 600, yeah.
But that'll just, and it doesn't really matter, I mean, it's 600 dollars, but that will give the, I'm just thinking, you know, give the road crew a little bit of time to plan for it. You know, being two plus weeks, so it just, I mean, it doesn't, I don't think it matters for 600 bucks. Saves you guys a little money on your budget. I mean, just, I don't know if it's worth it.
Would you like to see if the town can do it in a timely manner?
If Phil shows up, maybe we can discuss that.
Yeah.
We could bring it up when Phil comes tonight.
Yeah, I don't mind it, as long as we don't delay things such that we lose the opportunity.
Because you, you won't see it until the second week of July anyways.
Right.
At least, at your earliest.
Exactly.
So.
Does that mean that they can't use the funding then? Because it'll be past the date, or?
When is the meeting in July?
17.
17.
And then when's the first meeting in August?
August 7.
Ideally, I like to close the books with the last pay order on the 17th.
So we'd have to, we'd have to have road crew slash Kevin do it by, by the, by the
Put it on the pay order and hold the check.
Okay.
But you need the amount by then.
Okay.
So need the amount by then, so.
Right, the only problem would be is if they don't spend that 600 dollars, then they have to find between now and then, find something else to, to spend their budget on.
Well, they don't have to spend that.
You know what I mean, but
They don't have to spend.
True, I know, but just
Nah, we, we're fine letting that roll, and we can fund it.
Okay.
If we can, you know, use it for this.
So I guess then we'll table that until Phil gets back, and then we can figure out. But anyway, it's going to be second week in July.
I have one other question. Somewhere I saw you guys are putting in a drain on the building back to the street. Did I read that correctly? I don't know where I saw it, I was just trying to find it again. Something, so if the water got left on at the at the ball field, that it would drain somewhere, did I, maybe I'm mistaken, I thought I read that somewhere. Okay.
Definitely. No.
The, the valve will close if it gets left on for too long? Or, or so is it one like we're just, you have to hold it to keep it on?
Like at State Parks, like for washing dishes and
You hold it, and then you let go, it's gone, it's off, okay.
Right, and the water for the first year is not going to be on all the time.
You're right, because the
That's the motion.
With special events and baseball games.
Baseball games.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully down the road, maybe we could, uh, maybe leave it on all summer, maybe, or at least the hottest times of the year.
This is like a trial run, so if things go well, and we don't have problems that come in this first year with the limited use, then we can definitely talk about other, other things.
I wonder, though, if, if the, if there's no water, and somebody comes up to that faucet, if they're not gonna end up being angry that the faucet doesn't work, and then proceed to vandalize it.
Well, I think you just need to have a sign on it saying.
Available for only special events?
Something.
Yeah.
Just had similar, it was like, we just need some sort of, so that way they know, don't keep cranking on it.
Well, water's only turned on for town events.
Yeah.
I need baseball games.
Yeah, because otherwise I think.
People mess for a while, because if they're really hot, and they want a fill-up water bottle, or they, they wanna drink, and they see that thing, and it's not turned on, it's gonna be pretty aggravating. But, so I hope that, that we could get it at least turned on for the hottest months of the year or something. Not just special events. Yeah, down the road.
Well, fingers crossed that everything's gonna go well.
Uh, can I just make sure, um, Julie, so if we put the, uh, amounts aside, like you were saying, the six hundred and the twelve hundred for Bill, then how, what's the the drop, I mean, when do we have to get the work actually done? Like, what's the?
There's no timetable, cause I'll have the check.
Okay, well, that's awesome, okay. Great.
What's up?
Did, did you need anything on the security stuff?
On the cameras?
Are you waiting?
We've made, um, choices, but, I mean, we stayed well under the thousand dollars that we approved in the last meeting. Um, it's gonna be the same, um, security vendor that you guys used, I guess, for this building. Um, is it Rio?
Rio Link?
Yeah, Rio Link, and, uh, so altogether, I think these, the stuff we want to, uh, give Julie to order could be six hundred and fifty-five.
So do you, I, I know I read in the notes that you were going to do the water first, and then do the security system, I did some math. And without the fifty dollars for the meter, um, it comes to twenty-four eighty, which is under the twenty-seven figure that you had budgeted. So, since you are under kind of a timeframe, I don't know if you want to suggest that to get the security equipment now?
Yeah.
What does the SLAB board think? I mean, that's my idea, that's my feeling, but I wonder what everyone else thinks.
We just wanted to make sure we got the water, uh, and, you know, we felt good about the water first before, and we, and from this meeting, I feel like we are pretty, you know, it's a pretty safe bet.
Especially if we could get help with that six hundred figure that could be done by the town.
Yeah, and so I am, uh, we do want to go ahead and order the security. Cause I feel pretty confident we'll get, we'll be able to do the water for the twelve hundred and the six hundred, so.
Do you need a computer for it, or is it just, you just need a monitor?
We just need a mon, and I have a monitor down in the basement that can.
Where do you think you were gonna, uh, just put him on around the, the?
Yeah, we were actually thinking maybe, so the score cameras, we're thinking, um, we would put, like, three, like, on different parts of the building there, uh, to kind of make sure we can see every, as much of the area as possible, and we were thinking of putting one inside the building. Uh, just so that, you know, if somebody thinks they might be caught, and they try to get in the building to destroy something, we catch it twice, like. I don't know, but, that was just a thought, yeah.
Okay.
The wire, the wire that you're gonna use, is it coax or CAT six?
It's CAT six.
Do you need some?
Well, you might, but I, I think I have a spool at home.
Okay, I've got four or five hundred feet of it.
Oh, great, that's awesome, yeah.
Or something to hold it, so.
Okay.
I'd love to find a home for it. My house is wired, I bought a whole roll.
Yeah, okay, I'll keep that in mind.
I, I think also placing one that kind of points at the porta potty too, just because we've had that vandalized twice would be.
Yes.
Cool.
Enough.
Thanks, Emile.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Suriel.
Hi, Monica, good to see you. So energy's.
I brought that wire around here for you. I'll leave it here with Julie. Okay, I can buy you all time, I'll just drop it off.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Wait, you want some too?
No. Oh, please, I don't have stuff like that. Thanks. And don't leave us to your page, your, your time card, you'll leave them for us. Okay.
So I guess, I thought somebody was coming from energy, but that's not the case.
I guess we have a.
So we had a couple of RFPs provided us with. Painting was Sandy, is this, isn't this pretty much what nobody would bid on before?
Um, he did take out the blower test requirement, which the energy committee added in two years ago at my suggestion to take it out, because, you know, it's difficult enough to get a painter to bid on a job if you add things like they have to conduct a before and after blower test. Um, so they, so they took that up, Ken came in and reviewed it, the whole thing again, and he took that out. The, uh, energy committee put in a requirement to hand paint everything. Jay, or Ken took that out too, and they can use spray if they wanted. He said the energy committee's RFP that they put together two, two years ago was a pizza galley sized RFP, and not appropriate for the normal contractor.
Which I said all along, and Jay got very angry with me.
I had to say told you so, but. Okay?
Okay. So what's the board's pleasure with these?
Um, do you need a motion?
Yeah.
Let's see. And there's contract one, contract three, and contract four, is that correct?
No, those are gonna be later, we just have two.
So just contract one right now?
No, we have two, one is for painting and window ceiling, and the other's for
identifying.
Air sealing leaks and insulation.
So, um, I make a motion to, um, approve the, the bids to be put out to qualified paint contractors and to qualified contractors for the town of Wallingford.
A second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. The other thing was the energy committee, uh, recommended the appointment of Tom Fort to the, to the committee, they had an opening.
And it's recommended, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Tom is actually on our conservation committee too.
Do you need a motion for this?
Good member.
Okay, do you need a motion?
Or by consensus?
Or consensus.
By consensus.
Okay.
Yep, good to go.
I think that's it for energy committee stuff.
Do we want to do sidewalks?
So at the last meeting, um, we approved hiring VHB consultants for designing the school street sidewalks. We've got, copied the contract from Stephanie now. Basically, I, we're just looking, do you, could please want to authorize me to sign it?
Do we need a motion?
Stephanie, Stephanie went above and beyond, this just never happens this quick, ever. Cause VTRN had to approve it.
Right.
This was very quick to get this turned around, so.
Yeah, cause he said typically, it's a three-month process.
Do we need a motion?
I, I would do a motion on this.
I, I would make a motion to, um, have Bruce, um, date and sign our contract agreement with VHB consultants.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Look, are they getting up to our house, Kathy? They are, they're gonna go all the way to the, to the end?
They're gonna go until, I think, once we get past your house, it's solid sidewalk, it's
Okay.
good to go, so it's gonna end with that amount.
Okay.
It's going all the way.
It's going all the way, never, never mind, it's going all the way, and I think the sidewalks on the other side are being done too.
Yes.
Excellent. To, uh, to Prospect. Or Hillside.
No.
Oh, no, cause the, you cross over to Hillside. Where it stops now, it stops now, forever.
It's gonna stop where it already stops.
Okay.
I feel a jolt that I want a sidewalk now.
Me too.
All I can say is it's about time, we're getting chunks of that, you should see the amount of asphalt that came up this last winter.
I have five future in my driveway right now.
It's basically dirt. Coming at the perfect time.
Doesn't look like Phil's gonna make it tonight, but.
We just also need, um, you can do this by consensus if you want, to approve adding Shayna Lilis as a project designer to the VHB personnel list, she wasn't on the original list, so you'd need to sign to prefer.
So do we have consensus then, I?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, so anything we need to do for road commission tonight, was there anything that need to be approved?
Um, I had a couple things I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
Concerning the road crew. Way a while ago, probably, I think it was before we actually hired Lori, the board stated that we wanted the road crew to work five days a week in the summer, five eight-hour days. And, uh, I see the states, they're, they've gone back to four ten-hour days. Uh, nobody gave them permission to do that, and I, I am very strongly opposed to the ten-hour days. I think it, it ends up not being efficient, and.
I mean, I know that's the way it was in the past. During the summer, they went to four ten-hour days, because they get more done in a ten-hour day than they do in an eight-hour day.
I don't agree with that, and the board.
Right, but, but that's what, what used to be, so.
So can we ask them to return to the five eight-hour days?
We can if it's the consensus of the board.
Do we have any just data to say that whether or not which one works better during the summer, or we just have a gut feeling?
I don't think we have data here, I, I know when I worked for General Electric, and when I worked for Tammeran's and Procter &amp; Gamble, we all, they all did studies, and they found after eight hours, people's productivity just.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Geez, going back to time.
Only in a fair few places. Not the entire.
No, 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 I'm just.
Okay.
I mean, if it's the consensus of the board, it.
And it's, to me, it's fine, I, I, I'm a, the only reason I, I think in a ten-hour day is because that gives them an hour to goof in the morning, eight hours to do their work, and an hour to goof in the afternoon, where if you put them on four, he's recording, I know, um, you put them on four or five eight-hour days, you're only getting about six hours of work out of it. That's all.
And there's studies that go both ways.
Yes.
Right.
It doesn't matter to me, cause either, either one.
I mean, maybe even we say, like, we want you, we, we, we never approved of you guys going to
That's the big.
Five, five, cause that is, you're right, that is the idea, is that they didn't
Approve it.
Approve that. If you have a case for why it's going to work better in the, the summer, then bring that to us. But then we will make a decision based on that, cause I mean, if they say, oh, well, we can work longer because we have more daylight, then maybe that is worth it, but.
Or if it's a matter of a project where it's like, to load up and unload a Vietnamese.
But if it's, if it's to have the purpose of having a three-day weekend, then no.
The other thing is there were some townspeople that complained that there was never a road.
Nobody around there.
Completely can see that, that could be a thing.
Yes, it would have to be, like, if they did want to do four hours, they'd have to make sure that they weren't all off on Friday or off on Monday, they'd have to have some kind of.
It'd have to be staggered.
They just need to provide some reason why they did it without.
I'm, I'm a big advocate for four-day work weeks, so. But, at the same time, yeah.
It doesn't always work for everything.
And also, the big, like, you're right, Bruce, that the beginning of this is, they didn't do it, they didn't ask for this, or they didn't say, they just did it, so.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
And they didn't do it last year, right?
No.
Right, cause we.
It was refreshing their mind or whatever.
Wonderful.
There you go, you happy?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up, um, with the recent accident with Lori there, um, they didn't have any road signs out. Part of the finding of our insurer was that they didn't have road signs out, and they needed to do that, um.
Wasn't there also something on a backup camera, they don't have a backup camera?
Yeah, that, that may not be practical either, but.
But the road signs, there should have been road signs on it.
There should have been.
Yeah, every job.
Every job, and, and I think when Sandy gets back from vacation, we could ask her to draft a letter just stating that, you know, working safely is the condition of your employment, and.
Yeah.
Especially also because we got that grant last year to get all the new roadwork signs and everything else, so.
Exactly.
It's not like we don't have them available.
So we need to use them.
Don't have to be, you don't want flaggers, just, just. Work it out, that's it.
Well, to have the proper signage up, you can't be safe if you don't know that something's coming up.
And just failure to follow these procedures can result in disciplinary action.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
We have crews shut down daily, because it has a proper sign, they have to take right by them to, your dad, get out. See in a couple weeks, do you get the right back?
Can we reach to this by consensus?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that was the other two things that I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
Anything else we need to talk about on that, Sandy, or?
You have the thing about, um.
The truck?
The West Hill Road street sign.
Yeah.
An arrow, a route.
I've sent everything to VLCT while it's not covered under our insurance, because it's not listed. Our street signs are not listed in our insurance, she said part of their, um, service is to help us collect.
Okay, okay.
So that was always my point anyways, is for TLC to help us collect from. She sent me an email today and asked me, cause I have a picture. She sent me an email today and asked me, 'cause I have a picture of the, some of the stuff, and, um, she said, I need pictures of all of it, so I called the road crew and I said, where's the West Hill sign and some of that? They were never recovered. So I don't know if they're down in the brush in the embankment that the car went and drove down there, but they don't know where those signs are, or if they got thrown a toe away or something, but... I mean, really, this, that bend on that corner.
That's a corner. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I think the only thing we have left is select word comments and concerns. Any concerns from anybody? So, other business. So Elton Lake is open on Saturday. Wasn't a very good day for them.
Adam told me there was a large party, twenty-five people there. They stayed for most of the day.
Really?
Yes, really.
Why are you sweating?
And they all paid. They got, it was like eighty dollars they made.
Nice.
Yes.
Well, good.
So, there's something positive to report.
The other thing, uh, Sam the groom still hasn't obtained a lifeguard certificate, right?
No.
Has he signed, uh, any indication he's signed up for a program or found one?
No. It's discouraging.
We based his salary.
Well, we did.
Yeah.
The fact that he was gonna be a lifeguard.
Okay.
I'm wondering if we should retract that.
I would think at least some notification saying, please, where are you at this, otherwise...
Otherwise...
We'll have to reassess.
Right.
'Cause we, we was pretty much hired and paid based on that.
Right, right. And we made other employment decisions because we thought we were going to have that.
Right.
'Cause if he has something booked somewhere, no, you know, it's only a weekend, it doesn't take long, as long as it's planned.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the town is...
Are you typing that letter out now, Julie? Or Sandy? 'Cause you'll leave it in the morning, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'll send him an email, but he doesn't answer his emails, I'll...
I can get word out to him that he needs to look at this ASAP.
Well, I've sent, I've sent several messages and phone calls, so.
I just saw him a half an hour ago before his meeting. I'll get word out to him.
Bring the hurt.
Wrap them.
Yes.
And borrow Bruce's hammer.
Where's that gavel?
Yes.
Finally, the town received a check in the amount of fifty-six hundred dollars as reimbursement for the debris blower through the grants and aid equipment program, so. We've covered everything for tonight.
I'm gonna make a motion? You make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second. No?
No, you got it.
Okay, I'll second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Bye.